Oh, mine just kicked on. It was just delayed. Mine's green.
Nothing good, that means it's hot. Okay. Good evening, I want to welcome you to the City Groton Committee of the Hole for Monday, September 23rd, 2024. I want to call the meeting to order at 6:03 roll call. We have Counselor Norris, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Tally, and Deputy Mayor Depot. So we do have a quorum. So we will start going into new business or referrals. The first one is financial review. This is informing.
This is the year end review for the utilities. There was a question that got brought up when the annual report was reviewed on the water. So we'll kind of just go through these very quick like we've done in the past. We flipped to page six, which is for the electric division. You see the revenue was 55 million versus a budget of 56, or about a million below budget. The reason for that was there was the PPA adjustment that took place in May, which resulted in that being under budget because the budget was based on the original PPA. So then if we look at line 37, the operating expenses were at 49 million versus a budget of 52 million, or 2.5 below. Again, the major one there is the purchase power was the 2.5 below the budget. The net income, row 66, net income before bond principal requirements was 6.4 million versus a budget of 4 million, or 2.5 favorable. Again, that was based on the below budget expenses. So that was the high level of the electric division. So pretty much based a little bit over the 2.5 above budget. If we flip to page 12, which is the water division. Line 17, total water revenue of 12 million versus a budget of 12.5 million, so 500,000 below budget. This is based off of less water consumption during the year. The total operating expenses, row 30, was 12.4 million versus a budget of 12.6, or 200,000 below budget. The net income, and this is where the question was brought up from the annual report, was 1.1 million in the negative versus a budget of the 832,000. So we did have the budget as a negative loss for the fiscal year '24, or 300,000 over budget for that loss. So that's where those numbers came from. Again, the revenue was below budget based on just less consumption during the year. And then if we flip to page 17, which is the sewer division. Row 15, the total sewer revenue is 4 million versus a budget of 4 million, or $305,000 under budget. Again, this is based off of the water usage, and also there is a large customer that does have a deduct meter. The row 26, total operating expenses, 3.7 million versus a budget of 3.8 million, or 112,000 below budget. And net income, row 37, was negative 82,000 versus a budget of 16,000. Therefore, it was about 100,000 unfavorable to the budget. And again, that was driven based on the below budget revenues. So that was just a very high level for the fiscal year end for the utilities. So there was really nothing that skewed it too, too bad, more like I said, just the water usage is what triggered the water being below budget, and same with the sewer.
Okay, questions or comments from council? Counselor Sheffield? Well, I recognize you, Counselor Sheffield, if you still like to have the floor.
Sure. Ron, how's our, I guess, our water levels? Have we had a lot of rain over the spring or something? I mean, how do we?
I'll defer that one to Ron, as far as the, you're talking about the reservoir itself.
Well, yeah, and as far as how it affects our water and, you know, does the impact of lack of usage and our supplies is up, I guess, for water, you know?
Yeah, I'll address.
Okay, sure.
Okay. When Pfizer stopped producing pharmaceuticals, we gained an excess nine million gallons per day. So we're not going to run out of water. We have a capacity of, a capacity now of producing an additional nine million gallons a day. Now, as far as the reservoirs go, we didn't have a problem this summer. I'm sure we're over 90%, but we have a very deep aquifer, and we have a lot of water in reserve. So does that answer your question?
Excellent, sure. That's, thank you.
So just generally speaking, so with electric, for example, when you said revenue was less, I guess, running.
Yep.
Like, what does that, is that, is that revenue needed, or is that revenue could have been in excess of, if you know what I'm asking?
So like, would trigger that below budget from the revenue for electric? And is that where you're?
No, where it says, for example, June electric revenue, 3.9 million, 10% or 468 below budget, and 14.5% lower than last June. I guess I'm asking, was that money needed?
No, so if you recall, we did the purchase power adjustment, and it took place in May, and it brought that purchase power adjustment from the .04 down to the .0027, when the budget was produced, accounted for the PPA of the .04, .05. So that's what drove that below budget revenue. So we didn't need to have that purchase power adjustment.
Got it. Is that, so with water, and I guess the obvious answer could be people need to know the water, but did we know if that was because of, I don't know, drier days, irrigation, or is really no way?
I don't have the specifics as to what drove it, but if you look on page 14 of the packet, there is actually the cubic feet sold for the year, and you'll see that it's down 16 and a half million from the previous year, just as a, kind of just so you can see the volume change.
Yeah, just the interesting, I mean, I don't need an answer, but what caused that increase in water usage? Or people doing yard work?
Yeah, and you'll see that one of the bigger ones there is the industrial, which was about eight and a half of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Ron, thank you for that. Moving on, Groton Utilities, purchasing policy. This is informing.
So we're in the process of updating the purchasing policy for the utilities, and we just weren't looking for consensus. We brought the same discussion to the utility commission, and what we're looking to is just to kind of look at the approval rate, what, where the levels are at in the dollar amounts. Historically, since I've been here, and I think Ron looked back to the policy that he could find in 2006, the authorization level was 50,000 for both utility commission and council, so it hasn't changed in quite a long period. So we brought it to the UC to try to get to their consensus. What their recommendation was, again, this is just a recommendation from them, was to increase the utility commission level to 75,000 for approval, and then the city council at 100,000 for approval. And then, so everything over 100,000 would come to council, anything over 75 would be utility commission, anything below that threshold that's budgeted would be the utility director. However, if it's an on-budget item, that amount still stays at the 10,000 level for both utility commission and council, and that's based on the charter. So we're just looking for consensus if, if the council's in agreement with going with those authorization levels, or uncomfortable with that, and would like something different. So we're just looking for feedback.
And that's why I wanted to bring it. I mean, I didn't bring the entire policy to you because we're not ready to bring the entire policy. When we make changes to that, we will then bring that entire document to you, and it will be part of your, part of your backup. All we're looking to do is go from 50 to 75 for the utility commission, and 50 to 100 for the council, with the utility being the gatekeeper for expenditures. So that's, that's all Ron's bringing to you.
And then once we revise the policy, we will have the redlined copy, so you can, you have the whole policy with all changes that are in it.
Right.
The other thresholds in the policy, just so you're aware, the 25,000 for competitive bidding has to say the 25,000, that state statute, so that won't change. And so there's just, like you said, it's more just for that consensus on the authorization levels.
Counselor Sheffield?
Now, this is non-budgeted.
So these would be budgeted amounts that would come to approval, anything that's budgeted, and for the UC, over 75,000, and for council, 100,000, is the recommendation. But again, we're just looking for feedback.
Yeah, I would certainly like to see, you know, look at our policy first and then make an assessment from there.
Well, okay, hold on. We're asking for a consensus on it now. It will then go to, if you say no, then we're not going to change that in the policy. If the council gives a consensus of yes, we'll change it in a policy, and then when the other changes are made, that will go to the utility commission for approval, and then it'll come here for final approval, and you'll get a chance to discuss it again. So does that answer your question?
Okay. I, yeah, it answers the question, but I, go ahead.
Well, hold on a minute. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Okay, all right. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Steve. Could you go over those numbers again, Ron, like what you're changing? Again, you wrapped.
Yep. So, so with budgeted purchases, currently, anything that's over $50,000 for a spend has to go through both the UC approval, and then it comes to council with the UC recommendation for approval. So we're looking to just change those amounts, and again, we don't have to, it's just the recommendation to, because of the cost of everything going up, and more things coming to council, and the UC to change that amount for the utility commission from the 50 up to 75, so anything over 75,000 would have to go to the utility commission. And then for council, from 50,000 up to 100,000, so everything over 100 would have to come to the council as well for approval, so go through the utility commission and council. And then, like I said, anything that is non-budgeted stays at the 10,000 for both the utility commission and council.
Could you give an idea of, an idea for budgeted? I know it's probably going to change, but an idea of what actually would be costing over 100,000?
So, so, so one of the examples that was, got brought up in our initial discussion is just their annual subscriptions for like the Springbrook or the accounting software. It was always below the 50, now it's up over the 50,000. Any of the big projects would still be coming to use, like any of the big maintenance projects or overall capital projects would still be coming, most likely be over that 100,000. It's just that number hasn't changed, so it was just a recommendation to maybe move it just so, because more and more things are starting to come, both the utility commission and council, based on the dollar amounts.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with changing it, we've talked about this in the past, because we end up getting stuff that's, we need, like there's not even really a choice. If we want to keep running the utility, we have to approve it, and it's, you know, not the best use of our utility director's time or our time to just be saying yes to something we already basically said yes to in the budget. So I do think that if people have questions, like to me, the only thing that I could think of that someone would have an issue is unbudgeted expenses, but that's staying at 10,000, so that is kind of a moot point. But I agree inflation and increase of costs, we've had some things come before us that kind of doesn't make sense. So I'm all for raising it, that amount of the utility commission is, is also good with those numbers.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so now I'm looking for a consensus about 50 to 75 for the utility commission, and moving it from 50 to 100,000 for the council. We'll go around the room. Counselor Norris? Okay, Counselor Sheffield?
Undecided. So it's a no for right now.
Okay. Counselor Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Piazza?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Yes.
Okay, so, Ron, we have a consensus. We'll go back, we will revise the person policy with all the revisions, we'll take it through the review process internal, then it'll go to the utility commission for final review and approval, and then it'll come to council for final review and approval. And council, you will then get to see a hard copy of all the changes, it'll be redlined. Want to make sure that we're doing red lines when we're doing our changes.
Yep.
Make it easier for council to review, and the utility commission as well. Okay? All right, perfect. All right, Trident Park Water Tower? And if you could let Bill.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Let's see, so tonight I am requesting approval to create a purchase order for $311,000 to Wright Pierce Engineering to conduct a preliminary evaluation, tank inspection, and engineering and design options provided to, to provide a solution to support the potential removal of the Trident Park Water Tower. GU will, will perform the administrative support for the evaluation, inspection, and engineering design. The grant to the Navy was approved to improve reliability and resilience within the public community, serving the Navy community. A little bit of backup for you on this. Trident Park is Navy-owned. Groton Utilities supplies the water to them. They have a pump station, and they have a 300,000 gallon tank that's up there. It is 72 apartment buildings and roughly 400 apartments that are up there. The tank was last inspected in 2016. Refurbishing the tank was estimated to have a construction cost of nearly a million dollars, so $986,000. The Navy is concerned with the overall condition of the tank and the overall cost to rehabilitate the tank, and is asking GU for, to assist to provide alternative options. Right now, they're really looking at three options. One is to refurbish the tank. The second option would be to abandon and demolish the tank, upgrade the pump station to a smaller unit with VFD-driven pumps. And the third option is also do the same thing, get rid of the tank, and then come up with a different configuration for the pumps. One of them's inside a building, and one of them's outside the building. I'm happy to answer any questions for you. Again, they don't have the ability to, to work with Wright Pierce to generate the PO, they're asking for us to assist them with that. All the fees will be reimbursed to us, including labor that we need for the project.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Counselor Norris?
So this engineering firm is being contracted to do what? To evaluate the three options?
So they are actually being contracted to conduct a preliminary evaluation of the tank. Again, last time that they looked at it was 2016, to perform a tank inspection, and then to provide engineering design options to come up with a solution. So in short, the Navy doesn't want to spend a million dollars to refurbish the tank if it's truly not the right thing to do, so they want three different options. Wright Pierce is the organization that we utilize all of the time. They don't have the ability to work with Wright Pierce, they're asking for us to really only handle the administrative portion of it.
No, I, I agree it needs to be done. I was just wondering what was the purpose of the 2016 evaluation?
They did the evaluation, and they didn't act right away. So it was identified, yeah, so, hey, you need a million dollars. They weren't able to get the money right away, now they have grant money, and they want to say, hey, should we, or should we not, you know, refurbish the tank, or is it really the right decision? Should we look at alternatives? So Wright Pierce has offered to do that for them, they just don't have the ability to deal with them, so we're going to be the administrator in the middle.
Any other questions, Counselor Sheffield?
Bill, is 311,000 sufficient? Will we anticipate potentially going over, or?
Yeah, so on the back, it talks about the preliminary evaluation of tank inspections, And then if you look at the two other options that Wright Pierce had come up with estimates, if you take option number two, that's 256,350, add the two up, and that's where you come up with the 311. So that's the worst case, it's 311. Okay? If that helps.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So if and when this project would go through, about when would it start? Do you have about?
So actually, so the, you know, the assessment, the, the looking at it will start right away. So we're looking to generate a PO as soon as we have the approval from you. Give that to Wright Pierce. Again, we'll be the administrator, the, the in-between person between Wright Pierce and the Navy to do that. So I expect, probably get going and begin the project in a couple of months.
And what does that do for the residents in the midst of that? Let's say they do demolish with smaller tank.
The larger tank, so there's a.
Oh, larger?
Yeah, yeah, there's a big water tower up there, it's 300,000 gallon tank.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and that just solely feeds the residents up at Trident Park, and again, I think I mentioned 400 apartments up there.
Right. I thought the second one was demolish and put with a smaller tank.
Yeah, but it would still be theirs, right? So instead of having that big water tower?
Yep.
Like you'll see up by like William Sealy School, you might see that a little bit local, but it'll be a smaller tank and a different pump configuration system, it'll be more active, so it talked about the VFD drives. So that's really a continuous, as the flow goes up and increases the frequency on the motors to deliver more water, so it works that way versus having a whole tank to draw off of, if that makes sense. Yep.
So Counselor Piazza, let me ask, let me address your question. Bill, this is for the engineering. This is not for the demolition and construction. So that would be a separate grant that they would go after, and a separate resolution that would come to council.
Absolutely correct, Mayor. Thanks.
Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Are there none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit, Dan?
Hi, how are you?
Good morning. Good afternoon.
So I'm here to talk about the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. This is something we do annually. Groton Utilities, the tax credit program allows us to donate up to $150,000 through a state program where we are refunded through a tax credit. So the state-approved list for nonprofits requesting projects for assistance came through a few weeks back, and we've selected the Thames Valley Council Community Action, Children's Center in Groton for $65,000, and Riverfront Children's Center for $65,000 as well. Both are window replacement projects.
Can I open the floor for discussion? Counsel? Counselor Sheffield?
The max is like 150, and you chose, I guess, 130 for the two projects. Is there leave 20,000 to be used on something else, or?
There wasn't any project in that range. There was one other request in, in this area, and it was for much, much more than that. So it, it would have been a drop in a bucket.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Close extensions? So, motion passes 401. Deputy Mayor Depot abstaining. Okay. All right, that's that, we're going to move on to the brew run review. And so this is informing. So we just finished the brew run, so I asked Dan to come in and give the council an update.
Okay, Groton City Brew Run. We held our fourth annual Groton City Brew Run a couple of weeks back at Eastern Point Beach, if you're not familiar with it. It is a 5K race that leaves out of Eastern Point Beach and runs around the area, comes back to Eastern Point Beach, it's also a walk, and then it's followed up by a brew fest behind the Zaburski House at Eastern Point Beach. We had 17 breweries, we had an acoustic band, we had three food trucks, and it was a very successful event. Again, we had very nice weather, it was really nice there this year. 482 runners and walkers combined, which is more than 70, more than the previous year, 565 total participants, which is more than 100 more than previous years. It's growing, it's going great, and we'll be back again next September. Anybody have any questions?
That'll be our fifth annual next year.
And that'll be our fifth annual.
Yeah, I'll open the floor for discussion, Deputy Mayor Depot.
I just want to say thank you for, well, you, in particular, I see all the work that you do, but I know there's a whole team of people that works on it. I did go and volunteer this year, and this is a really fun event, and I always hear a lot of positive feedback. And I know prior to getting it off the ground, we had talked about it for a few years doing something like this, so it's really cool to see it come to fruition and get bigger every year, so, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for your help. I know you're manning the water table and the fruits. It takes everybody. Excuse me.
Well, when we first started this, we weren't sure how big the first event was going to be, we didn't, we weren't sure where it was going to go, and I think I can say that it has exceeded people's expectations, both ours locally and with the chamber. And it's been a good collaboration between Groton Utilities and the Chamber.
Yeah, it's been great, and we're bringing people into the area, seeing what the City of Groton's about, bringing them down to one of the most beautiful parts of the city, so it benefits us in that way as well. So yeah, it's going great, I think.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, as a follow-up to the mayor, I was part of the first, I volunteered on the first one, so it was, you know, it's great to see that it's, it's growing like it is, so congratulations and great work.
It's a good team with the Chamber.
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Dan. Any fire department vehicle? Chief Tompkins?
All right, good evening. I'm here today to, we're looking to replace our pickup truck. This is a replacement, we're not growing our fleet. We had a 2005 F-350, the motor blue, and obviously it's 20 years old, almost 20 years old. We actually replaced the body on it once with an old pickup truck that we were getting rid of, so it's really just passed its life. It would cost $10,000 for a new engine, plus labor to put it in, so we're looking to buy a new one. You had some backup information. I, this is the pickup truck we'd like, it is on lot, this is state bid, so they wouldn't need to go out for an RFP. Again, we are replacing, but we are downsizing a little. We had a 350, we're going to just get a 250. We do tow two boats that we have, but we used to tow larger trailers, we had a regional communications trailer that we no longer host, so, so this will meet our needs. What I did not have at the time of this backup, and I still don't have totally, but I would like to add into the resolution would be a lightened package, because obviously we need to put some lights on the vehicle, we need to put some decals, a city seal, Chevron in the back, which is the yellow striping for, for protection that would be required, actually. And also a plow. We use this truck for running around, of course, for moving equipment, but we also plow our own facilities, so. So we have a plow, which is in good condition from the current pickup truck. We would just need to get a new frame, you know, package to fit this particular pickup truck. The one that we have won't fit just because of size and things like that. So I would like to add that in. I can come at another time and give you those packages if you'd rather. I did get pricing for Communications Plus for three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. They are on the state bid, so that would, you know, that's already low bid. And that's a very basic light bar and light package. We're not gonna, it will not look like the response vehicles we have. It will have some lights, but it's much more low-key. We're not going to put a radio in that. That's six thousand dollars. We're not going to spend that money. We'll use our portable, who's ever plowing at the time or running around. Again, it is not a normal frontline response vehicle, so we don't feel we need to spend that money on this vehicle. The plow, I will get better numbers verbally. The company said seventeen to eighteen hundred. And they also are on the state bid. They're supposed to have that bid in, that paperwork in tomorrow.
For a day, we're, this is just for the truck only, not for the additional stuff, right?
Okay, well, you tell me. I can put it all in a package,
Ron, help me out here.
Because it's two weeks away, but I don't know what you would rather have.
Well, I want to make sure, I want to make sure we're talking apples to apples with the backup material that I have for the council.
Historically, what we'll do with a vehicle is we try to capture all the costs associated with it and put that in the resolution with the different vendors. Right now, we, as when the packet went out, we only had the price for the truck at that point in time. So hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have all those additional costs that Chief was talking about, so we can build them in. So that way, that resolution truly captures the cost of that vehicle.
Okay.
Sorry. And I, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I brought it to the cow. I'd like to get the vehicle in. It is on lot, but obviously, you know, has to get the resolution, the PO. We have to get it and then outfit it so we can have it for the winter months, you know, if the snow comes.
So. Councilor Piazza, I'll hold your hand first.
Thank you, Mayor. So when you're talking about the plow, so this here that lists everything, it has snow plow camper package in it. Is that in addition to, or is that the?
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of the break-in system and things like that. When you plow and you tow, you need certain harnesses, wiring, things like that, so it's ready to receive those packages. That is not, no, that is not. Yeah, that's prep work for a plow package.
And for the powertrain warranty for five years, a hundred thousand, how soon do you think you guys would burn that out? Say five years. How long would it take you to get to a hundred thousand?
The vehicle we're replacing had fifty-six thousand miles on it. So it's a lot of just around town miles, idling at times, but plowing in the winter and things like that. So that's where your wear and tear comes.
Yeah.
Part of the problem with, you know, it's not worth replacing a motor when the body and every other thing is twenty years old. It's just, you know, dry rot it and, you know, rust it and all those things.
So it's more run hours than it is?
Right.
Miles?
Right.
Okay.
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. The additional, the two additional items, the light package from Communications Plus and the plow, is the plow package, where is that coming from again? Is it the plow?
I'm not sure. Captain Knickie is working on those prices for me. I do know that the company is on the state bid that he's getting it from, but I can't think of the name off the top of my head.
Are those two expenses still coming out of capital reserve funds because they're for the vehicle?
Yes, that would be, I think, to what Ron was saying, is what I'm hoping. Yes, there's money in the capital fund for the vehicle outfitted. And so I would rather take it out of capital, you know, and therefore have one package. But I could come back for a second resolution if needed.
Well, that's my next question is, including this fifty thousand, four hundred and one dollars and the cost for the lights and the cost for the snow plow setup, are, does that still keep you on track for your vehicle replacement plan in your capital reserve funds?
Yes. Yes. So the other, the vehicles we just bought, if you remember, we bought two, you know, those, those packages, those light packages with radio and all, they were nineteen thousand and change. So we're a lot, a lot lower. And we do have money in the capital fund for, to replace this vehicle.
I just, in my opinion, I'd be okay bringing the amended resolution and voting on it in the next meeting instead of waiting another committee of the whole.
Absolutely. So I'm going to turn this over to Ron.
So there may be one other change if council is okay with it, and that would be the funding source. We are approaching the deadline with commitment stuff for ARPA money, and there's currently one of the projects on the list that is no longer going to get done. So what we're thinking of doing is putting this as an ARPA project, just again to draw down on our ARPA money, because we have to have that committed by the end of the year. Not spent, but committed for it. So we're hoping to use the ARPA money to help start drawing some of that additional ARPA money down.
So CCM just sent an email last week that said the definition has changed. And the definition we've been using in the past was if the money was obligated by the council, we were good to go. That definition has changed, and now the money has either, you either have to have a PO or the money's obligated, meaning?
Yeah, there has to be a contractor or PO in place. It doesn't have to be spent, but you have to have that agreement in place with the vendor.
By the end of the year. So you're going to be seeing some RFPs coming out and us coming to you before, then in the years we make sure that we spend the money. I know that's a little bit different than what we just said, but I think it's still in line with your recommendation. Do you have anything else?
Could I ask a question?
Deputy Mayor, you still have the floor.
Which was the ARPA project that came off the list?
It was the small business grants. We couldn't, they couldn't come to an agreement with the organization that was going to host that. If you recall, it was going to be a third party that was going to administer that grant. And then there was some back and forth, and then it ended up that it was not going to be able to work.
And what was the amount of that?
One hundred thousand dollars. Is that right? Or is it fifty?
No, I believe it was like a hundred or one fifty.
I think it was, I think it was one hundred. I don't think it was one fifty. I think it was one hundred. But what we'll do, where am I? And either the first committee of the whole or the second committee of the whole of October will come in and give you a full brief on where we are on the ARPA funds and expenditures and RFPs since we have a push now. That way council can be brought up to date. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yes, it does, and I'm so fine with bringing all of the, the whole cost of the whole vehicle to the council.
All right, there was a hand over here or more. Councilor Sheffield?
Okay, so with these, with this package in place, how does it affect our capital reserves after this? Are we still sufficient for more projects potentially by the end of the year? Or are we going to try to use ARPA funds as much as possible?
So if you recall, during the last few budgets, we've been trying to put a hundred, I think even up to three hundred thousand in one year of money into the capital to try to prep for the purchase of a fire truck down the road. So there is money putting, put it away. Is there enough right now to buy a fire truck? No. Chief can speak to that more, but that's what we've been trying to do. So by using the ARPA funds, it will help keep that money for future replacements.
Okay, so we're going to change this to ARPA funds and not capital reserves?
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get clarified. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor North?
So, are we also saying therefore that there's no other project or need that the ARPA funds can be used for? Since my understanding is purchase of this truck, the funding is already in place somewhere else.
Could you ask a que, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm asking is, did staff take the time to say, which is kind of surprising, we couldn't do the small business grant in-house? That's a little surprising. But since we're not going to spend it on that, is there anything else that directly impacts businesses that we could do in-house rather than take this money or the whole thing and purchase the truck since we already have that money, I believe, allocated somewhere else?
Go ahead, Ron.
So I'll answer the piece on this truck. This was not a budget intended purchase and replacement. It's just that there is money in the capital from the years of putting away with the intent that it would be building up the fund for a million-dollar fire truck down the road. So this truly wasn't like it was in our capital plan to replace it this year, but just happened that the motor had the issue and...
Got it. So that would still leave conversation for another day. So that would still leave fifty thousand dollars, quote-unquote, available in that offering? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of October 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief Burton? Let's talk about boats and marine boat engines.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're looking to replace our boat motors. It is something that we planned on. We went to two, or we have two funding sources available. At the beginning, or the end of last year, we put in a JAG grant for thirty-one thousand dollars with the idea of replacing the motors at that time. The reason why we were looking at it then is because we just started to put marine operations back into place again, and the control throttles, as well as the motors, were looking a little deteriorated. So we did plan on replacing them. In addition to that, for the current budget, we added equipment for the boat to our current line item, covering the maintenance and equipment, so we can cover the expense of the new engines. These will be a little smaller than what we currently have on there because we don't lose any performance. It's a little bit cheaper than the current motors, and it's on GSA bid or government financing bid. So the company's actually in Florida, but they're going to ship the motors up here for the contract price. And then they will send them to an installer here and will arrange for the installation to be done. The amount is a little over thirty-five thousand total. And like I said, we have the financing sources because we planned for it ahead of time. It's actually timely because we just lost the oil pump on one of the engines, just because of their age, so.
I'll open the floor for discussion. Any questions or comments? Okay. I will take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of October 7th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Have a good night.
I would like to get a motion to add, where are we? Washington Park Basketball Court Reconstruction to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, so we're at, so basketball courts. Ron, I'll let you lead this. You should have information in front of you. One should be the bid sheet, and one should be the letter to the finance director.
So these, this bid closed last Thursday. So we were still in the process when the agenda went out of vetting the low bid, and we wanted to make sure we had that all squared away. And also, the Director of Parks and Rec was on vacation last week, so we didn't want to just go ahead and make a decision without including Mary. So we did finish up our vetting today, and the recommendation based on some phone calls that were made and some feedback was to go ahead with low bidder. I believe it's Masano Brothers. I'm not a hundred percent on this.
You're correct. Yeah, Ma Sano.
And they came in at a hundred and fifteen thousand. And then Constantine Sealing was a hundred and twenty-six thousand, and then B&amp;W paving, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. So those were the three bids that were received. And I can let Mary talk more about the project or...
Okay. So as you, I think everybody's aware, we're looking to redo the basketball courts at Washington Park, and we have some collaborations that are happening with that also. So this enables us to get this project completed. The company's looking and ready to go as soon as this gets approved. So that would mean that that court would be in place before the winter, which would be an awesome addition to the park. I believe, I was shared that this is going to come out, this is one of the ARPA projects, so it's going to, the funding's going to come from the ARPA funding that's been approved. And then, I guess, we'll work, move forward with the donation that we're getting from the Connecticut Sun.
Correct. We've not received a donation yet from the Connecticut Sun. When that comes in and council approves it, we will put it in line item for maintenance of the court. And so that money will get spent for the court. Okay? Anything else?
I don't have anything.
I'll open the floor for discussion. Councilor Sheffield?
Now, how much do we expect from Connecticut Sun as far as?
The committed amount was sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty, okay.
This year. And then we'll get a, I think, two more years, we'll get twenty-five grand each.
Two, okay, for the next three?
Next two.
Next two, okay.
Okay, Councilor North?
So we had budgeted, was it ninety-five originally in the ARPA plan?
I believe that increased to one twenty.
So I guess what I meant, so this one fifteen is actually going to be less to the city because we're getting a sixty thousand dollar donation?
No. So this amount will come out of ARPA funds. The donation from the Connecticut Sun, first of all, we haven't received it yet. But once we receive it, it'll come to council to receive and accept it, and then it will go into a specialized account just for the maintenance, the future maintenance of the basketball court.
And that total amount is sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand for this year, and then?
Twenty-five thousand and twenty-five.
Twenty-five for the next two years after that.
So it'll be a hundred and ten thousand.
So if I may?
Councilor North, you still have the floor.
So that hun, that hun, whatever dollar figure you just came up with is, so their donation, their sponsorship, it's for planned out maintenance for X number of years? Or is it just going to sit in a pot somewhere? I mean, technically, it may not be touched at all for the next three years.
Well, correct, depending on the, depending on the condition of the court.
Right.
I am anticipating that the court will get a lot more use once it's totally refurbished and looks like the presentation that we agreed to. But the agreement that we have with them, the MOU with them, is for three years.
Thank you.
Any other, did you have your hand up? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to, if I'm reading this right, from start to finish, it should take about thirty days to do the court, correct?
Thirty business days, yes. So not like, I read that twice today myself.
Yeah. So... But if they're going to start it in October, they've got to finish it before winter. So we can anticipate, even with delays, their expected completion date is November 8th, but even with some delays, it'll definitely be done before December.
Correct.
Correct. And when, when discussion is complete, I'm going to ask you to move this to the special Mayor and Council meeting of next week. But the floor is still open for discussion. If there's any other questions. Councilor Sheffield? Councilor Sheffield?
Have we used Misono Brothers before around any construction work?
Not that I'm aware of, so that's why we did, I had a couple of calls today that I did not get ahold of somebody, but Mary did with a surrounding town that has used them, and they, they were satisfied with their work. So we wanted, like I said, we wanted to make sure we did some due diligence to our side because we had, we haven't used them since I have been here. I don't know if there was anything previous or not.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a warranty or along with this? Within the first six months, while we find cracking and blah, 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 they come back in or, I mean, who knows?
Yeah, there's not necessarily so much, but we can work with the vendor. I'm sure if there's an issue right off the geco, then yeah, we're going to hold payment. We will hold, hold back and make sure everything is up to satisfactory before final payment's made.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, here now, I'll take a motion to move this, the mayor, correction, to the special mayor and council meeting of 30 September, 2024.
So moved. Second?
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Extension, motion carries. So we'll have that, all right? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No more vacations.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I was talking to Mary.
I'll take a motion to adjourn. Who, is there a?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. At 6:53. Okay, thank you, council.
Hey, doesn't matter, man, you can't jump. With your kneecap, because you're up in the air, right? Old bones, man. Old bones, you know what they say? Old bones.